All right. Thank you very much. Good afternoon. I now call to order the Tempe City Council Work Studies Session. Mayor Woods is out of town on work-related business and is unable to run tonight's work-studies session. He may try to join us virtually, but in his absence, he has asked me as Vice Mayor to lead tonight's meeting. Council meetings can be viewed live on Cox Cable Channel 11, online at tempe.gov/tempe11, or virtually through Microsoft Teams. If you would like to speak on Agenda Item and have not yet submitted an electronic speaker card, you may still do so. Please visit tempe.gov/councilcomment and complete the electronic card. Be sure to select the option "I will be attending the meeting virtually to personally comment." When it is your turn, I will call your name. You will then be able to turn on your microphone so we can hear you. You will have up to three minutes to speak, and a countdown timer will be visible on the screen to help you track your time. Please submit your card by 4:15 p.m. today to ensure smooth operation of the meeting. Please note, the Microsoft Teams hand raise feature is not monitored, so submitting an electric speaker card is the only way to be placed on the Agenda and the queue. So we'll go to move to Agenda Item Number Two, Announcements from the Mayor and/or City Manager. So Item 2A, this item has is a Friends of the Library 60th Anniversary Proclamation, but this item has been moved from the Agenda. The proclamation will be read by the Mayor at a future community event. Item 2B, joining us is for National Voter Registration Month and Day Proclamation. And joining us is Avery Zola, who is Voter Education Manager for the Citizens Clean Elections Commission. Avery is a Phoenix native, a U.S. Air Force veteran, and a Flynn Brown Fellow, whose leadership and outreach, civics, and public service has earned distinguished recognition in Arizona. Welcome, Avery. I will now read the proclamation. Whereas the Office of the City of Tempe City Clerk is committed to encouraging broad voter registration, access, and citizen participation in elections among voting eligible citizens; and whereas the Office of the Tempe City Clerk recognizes that Americans are not able to vote because they miss a registration deadline or do not update their registration information or are unfamiliar with how to register; and whereas the Office of the Tempe City Clerk recognizes the need for diverse partners, such as nonprofits, libraries, businesses, colleges and universities, and others to work in the communities they serve to register citizens to vote; and whereas the need for reliable and trusted public information and education on voter registration is critical to America's active participation in elections and the integrity of electoral processes; and whereas the Office of the Tempe City Clerk is committed to joining national efforts to support voter registration and citizen participation in elections throughout the month of September, recognized nationally as National Voter Registration Month; and to highlight the specific call to action on National Voter Registration Day; and whereas National Voter Registration Day, observed annually on a Tuesday in September, this year on September 16th, 2025, serves as a nationwide nonpartisan civic holiday dedicated to ensuring every eligible voter has the opportunity to register and participate in our democracy. Now, therefore, I, Dorian Garland, Vice Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare September 2025 as National Voter Registration Month and September 16th, 2025 as National Voter Registration Day in Tempe, Arizona. So we will move on to Item 2C, which is the Fannie McLaren Proclamation. I now recognize Councilmember Hodge to read a proclamation honoring Fannie McLaren.
Hello, everyone. I am here to read a proclamation that I served to Major Fannie Mae McLaren, excuse me, Major Fannie Griffin McLaren in August 21st. She was actually born September 22nd, and she will be 105 years old on that date. And I wanted just to tell her happy birthday. And myself and the Mayor, we went to a celebration for her. And let me read the proclamation. Whereas Major Fannie Griffin McLaren stands as one of the two last surviving members of the historical 688 Central Postal Directory Batlon, famously known as the 688. And whereas the 688 was the first and only all African-American woman unit of the Women's Army Corps to serve overseas during World War II, answering the call of duties as a critical time when over 17 millions of pieces of mail had accumulated and leaving countless Americans and soldiers disconnected from homes and their loved ones. And whereas though the relentless declamation, courage, tireless work in processing over astonishing 65,000 pieces of mail per shift, the 688 restored the hope and morale among our U.S. troops, extending exemplary services and patriotism. And whereas despite confronting racism, sexism, and segregation both at home and within the military, Major McLaren and her fellow members carried out their mission with steadfast determination, dignity, and excellence. And whereas Major Fannie Griffin McLaren, born in Louisiana on 1920, barely answered her nation's call, no, excuse me, bravely answered her nation's call during World War II and continuing her trailblazing military career by re-enlisting in the Air Force, where she broke barriers as the first woman to command an all-male unit in the Strategic Air Command. And whereas Major McLaren's life and service ensured the legacy of the 688 endurance in American history. Now, therefore, I, Berdeta Hodge, Councilmember of the City of Tempe in Arizona, do hereby declare August 21st, 2025, Major Fannie Griffin McLaren Day in Tempe, Arizona. And I just want to say, even though she said that they're recording it for her, Major McLaren, we love you. Happy birthday, and we honor you. Thank you.
That is wonderful. Thank you so much, Councilmember Hodge. It's an honor to have her living in the city of Tempe and all the service that she and the other members did. So thank you for reading that. Agenda Item Number Three is a call to the audience. This portion of the meeting is reserved for those wishing to speak on Issue Review Session and Committee of the Whole Items on this Agenda. Before we begin, I will review the protocol for public comment. You may speak up for up to three minutes on matters appearing on the Agenda. Please begin by stating your name and city of residence for the record. We ask that all speakers refrain from personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks and from becoming disruptive while addressing the council. Continued disruption may result in the removal from the meeting. Because this is an official city council meeting that is recorded, livestreamed, and broadcast on Tempe 11, electioneering or campaigning activity is not permitted. This means no promoting your candidacy, asking for votes or signatures, or using this form for campaign purposes. Madam Clerk, were there any electronic speaker cards received for this meeting?
Madam Vice Mayor, no, there were not. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Then we will move on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is the Issue Review Session. So I will now call on, let's see, we have Item 4A. It's Budget Update. So I will call on Lizette Camacho, Deputy City Manager, and Robert Behr, Municipal Budget Director, for a presentation.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Before I start with the presentation, I'd like to take a moment to introduce our new budget director, and that's Robert Behr. He started last week. And just a little bit about his professional experience. He has over 14 years of experience in local government budgeting in Arizona and has extensive experience in revenue forecasting, capital planning, general obligation bonds, and utility rate modeling. He's also a graduate of Arizona State University, which is a big plus for him. He holds a Master of Public Administration and degrees in economics and political science. Robert is on camera right now, so I wanted to welcome him on the team. I also want to thank the budget team for all their work in putting the information for this presentation. That's Lori Osikowski, Scott Gruber, Kevin DiDomenico, Carrie Taylor, and Benicia Benson. This presentation came about as a request from City Council at the budget review sessions we had last spring to provide an update on the budget as we start the new fiscal year. In this presentation, I'll be providing an update on the two largest revenue sources for the General Fund, and they are local taxes and state shared revenues. I'll also provide an update on fiscal year 2025 year-end results of all of our major funds. A few key takeaways from this presentation is that fiscal year 2026, the current fiscal year that we're in, is the first year that we'll see the full impact of the loss of residential rental tax. If you remember, we estimated that that would result in a revenue loss of 9% across three funds. The three funds are the General Fund, the Transit Fund, and the Arts and Culture Fund. As you all know, local taxes are largely dependent on the economy. We continue to see economic uncertainty across at the national level and also here in Arizona. We haven't seen the full impact of the tariffs. Also saw the federal budget and tax reductions that were passed earlier this summer. So we're continuing to monitor local, state, and federal economic trends and any other policy that may impact our local tax revenues. One good news is that the ending fund balances at the end of fiscal year 2025 for all the major funds are above the council-adopted financial policy. So this is a reflection of the city's continued commitment to sound management of resources, focus on strategic priorities, and continued emphasis on long-range financial planning. Moving on to the next slide. Today's presentation directly aligns with the council's strategic priorities, strong community connections, and financial stability of the city. The specific performance measures are 2.11 and 5.05. In the next slide, you'll see that the General Fund is the largest operating fund of the city. It funds the operations of police, fire, medical rescue, park and recreation, library, to name a few. As you can see on this chart, moving on to the pie chart to the right, the largest revenue source for the General Fund is the dark blue pie slice, and that's local taxes at 48%. The second-largest revenue source for the General Fund is the tan pie slice. That's state shared revenues at 25%. We also collect revenues for charges for services, primary property tax, fees, licenses, and permits, and any other miscellaneous revenues we have here in Tempe. Moving on to the next slide. As I mentioned earlier, the largest revenue source for the General Fund is local sales tax. The city's tax rate is 1.8%. As you can see on this slide, the 1.8% is distributed among three funds. 1.2% goes to the General Fund. 0.5% goes to the Transit Fund, and 0.1% goes to the Arts and Culture Fund. General Fund revenues are unrestricted. However, both Transit and Arts and Culture, their revenues are restricted for their purposes. Here in Tempe, our voters also approved a 5% bed tax on hotel and motel rentals. Revenues for the bed tax is also restricted to promote tourism. The metrics you see here in the bottom of this slide applies to across all three funds. So at the end of fiscal year 2025, total taxable sales were down 2.8% compared to last year. So last year, I'm referring to is fiscal year 2024. Sales tax revenues were also down 2.6% compared to the prior year. The lower taxable sales and lower sales tax revenue is primarily the result of the loss of residential rental tax. Even though we had lower taxable sales and sales tax revenue, we did see growth in retail, utilities and communication, restaurants, and contracting business categories. But the growth in those categories were not sufficient to offset the loss of residential rental tax. In the next slide, we'll go over historical 10-year historical information on combined General Fund sales tax and bed tax collections going from fiscal year 2016 to fiscal year 2025. So these are actual revenues collected for each of the fiscal year. In this chart, the dark blue bar is the General Fund revenue that's been collected. And then on top of that, you'll see a light blue bar, and that's the bed tax component of the sales tax. As you can see here, for fiscal year 2025, revenue was down 2.5% compared to fiscal year 2024 at $146 million. As I mentioned earlier, that's primarily due to the loss of residential rental tax. In the next slide, we'll go over monthly-to-budget actual comparisons for the General Fund and General Fund sales and bed tax collections. This chart compares budget to actuals. So the dark blue bars that you're seeing here are the actual monthly revenues collected. And then the line that you see, the red line on top of that, is the budget. We do account for monthly seasonalities in our forecast, as you can see here. Again, actual revenues collected for each of the month going back August 2024 through July 2025. As you can see here, for fiscal year 2025, revenues for General Fund sales tax and bed tax were below the February forecast by 1.2%. That's about $1.7 million. I'm going to focus on July, which is the last bar that you see on this chart. We don't have a lot of information right now because we're at the very beginning of the fiscal year. 8% the November forecast. We'll have at least a quarter's worth of information for revenues and expenditures. But as far as July here, as you can see, combined revenues for sales and bed taxes are below the budget, approximately $300,000 below the budget. In the next slide, we're going to discuss state shared revenues. As I mentioned earlier, state shared revenues are the second-largest revenue source for the General Fund. To the right, you see two pie charts. You can see that state shared revenue is 25% of the total General Fund revenue. And then the tan breakout below breaks out the three components for General Fund state shared revenues. So they include state vehicle license tax, so motor vehicle registration, state sales tax, and then state income tax being the largest component of state shared revenues. These three revenue sources are shared with all incorporated cities and towns throughout the state. And the distribution of the state shared revenues is based on the population of the city or town. I do want to talk a little bit about Proposition 495, which passed in August of this year. This is the Santan Valley incorporation that were approved by their voters. As I mentioned, state shared revenues are distributed based on population for each of the cities and towns. So with the incorporation of Santan Valley, you have one more city that is sharing the state shared revenues. So the total population for the state will go up with the addition of Santan Valley. But the population for Tempe remains about the same. So our share of the state shared revenues will be smaller. So what that means is that we will have annual revenue losses in the General Fund and the Transportation Fund. In the General Fund, we estimate that revenue loss at 1.3 million. And then in the Transportation Fund, their primary revenue source is the gas tax or the Highway User Revenue Fund. Again, that's another type of state shared revenues. And in that fund, we expect that they will have annual revenue loss of $255,000. The next three slides will cover the updates for the major funds. The first one is General Fund, our largest operating fund. The fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2025 is expected to be above financial policy. In the General Fund, the financial policy is between 20% to 30%. So at the end of fiscal year 25, we expect it at 36%. Also wanted to highlight a few of the budget balancing measures we implemented in fiscal year 26. And that included the drawdown of the Public Safety Retirement System, or PSPRS, and other post-employment OPEB reserves. We are expecting the fund balance in the General Fund to stay within policy throughout the end of the fiscal year 2026. As I mentioned earlier, local taxes are, if you go back, Jason. As I mentioned earlier, local taxes are highly dependent on the economy. There's still a lot of uncertainty, as I mentioned. And we did discuss it, Mayor and Council, during the budget review sessions, that if we see further economic slowdown or any future legislative action that impact local tax revenues, additional budget balancing measures may be required. And they could include increasing vacant positions. But we could always put a process in place to allow for hiring of crucial positions like police and fire. Also reducing service levels to reduce costs and mitigate the impact of unfulfilled positions. Ship resources to the highest priorities, services, and programs. And lastly, to continue to identify any economic opportunities to increase the tax base. The next slide will provide a brief update on the enterprise funds, and that's water, wastewater fund, solid waste, emergency medical transport. For the water and wastewater fund, their financial policy or fund balance policy is 25%. And we expect at the end of fiscal year 25 that the fund balance will be above that policy. Going into fiscal year 26, we did include any rate adjustments that were recommended from the latest rate study last December. Solid Waste, very similar story here. Preliminary fiscal year 2025 fund balance is expected to be above the policy. And in the solid waste fund, we also include rate adjustments from the latest rate study, including the fiscal year 26 revenue estimates. The Emergency Medical Transport Fund, the fund remains stable. This fund doesn't have a fund balance policy established yet. We're going to, as part of the budget process for fiscal year 2027, Robert and I will work on developing that policy for council's recommendation and approval. Moving on to the Special Revenue Fund. We have Transit, Transportation, Arts and Culture Funds. The Transit Fund is expected to have fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2025. That is above their fund balance policy of 25%. We do have a planned drawdown of fund balance in this fund, but is expected to remain within policy within the five-year forecast. The Transportation Fund is also expected to have fund balance above its fund balance policy of 10% at the end of fiscal year 2025. We're going to continue to monitor this fund to ensure that their expenditures are in line with the revenues that they're collecting. And this one is, you know, the fund that is also affected by the reduction in state shared revenues as a result of the incorporation of Santan Valley. The Arts and Culture Fund, again, expected to have fund balance above its fund balance policy of 10% at the end of fiscal year 2025. And also continuing to see facility and programming revenue remain strong for this fund. Moving on to the next slide. The next update we'll have from Mayor and Council would be the long-range forecast in November. As I mentioned earlier, at that time, we'll have a quarter's worth of data for revenues and expenditures. What we'll do in that forecast is revise all our estimates for all the major funds, so revenues, expenditures. And then we'll also provide information on their fund balances as far as meeting their policies throughout the five-year forecast. For the November forecast, we'll also have, you know, additional information from our forecasting partners. And that includes a report from the Arizona Finance Advisory Committee. They do provide a report out on the Arizona and U.S. economies. And typically, our growth or forecast assumptions mirror some of their assumptions as well. With that, that concludes our presentation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much for the presentation. And I'll now open up the floor to any council members for discussions or questions on this item.
We just have one quick thing, Vice Mayor. Lizette has been meeting with me every month since June, I want to say. And she's been spectacular in terms of keeping me up to date with all the revenue projections. And just want to do a shout-out because they've come really close to what it was that we voted on. So I'm very proud of them. So thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Enberg. And before I, you know, and I just want, I forgot to mention that all the information that I provided today is also on our website, the Municipal Budget Office website. We do publish monthly tax revenue reports, and we also provide quarterly performance reports. It does have revenues and expenditures and also performance for all the departments. So I wanted to put it out there. If you want more details, this information is posted on our website.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, can I just say something to the folks? I just want to say thank you so much for the presentation. And also thank you for having our stewardship throughout our financial because there is a lot going on right now within federal funding and everything. And you're doing a phenomenal job of keeping us on track and even going far and beyond and making sure that we will be sustainable, not just this year, for the future to come. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodge.
So do we have any other comments or questions from council? All right. I want to say, welcome, Robert. We're glad you're part of the team, and go Devils. And hearing no other questions or comments, I'll go ahead and close the discussion on this item. And thank you so much for your presentation. So we will now move on to Agenda Item 4B, which is Tempe Transportation Plan. And so I will call on Eric Iverson, the Transportation and Sustainability Director, Chase Wallman, Principal Planner, and Lindsay Post, Senior Planner, for a presentation.
Awesome. Thank you, Vice Mayor Garland and members of the council. I'm assuming you can all see us and our team here in the conference room.
We can see you.
All right. Great. I'm going to kick this off. Thank you for your time. As you mentioned, Vice Mayor, I'm Eric Iverson. I'm the Director of our Transportation and Sustainability Department. And I am here with Chase Wallman, our Principal Planner, and Lindsay Post, who are also going to present. Lindsay is our Senior Planner in our planning section of our department. We also just want to mention, and the team will talk about this a little bit more, we do have a consultant, HDR, that is following us along in this one-year process of developing this transportation plan. So this is a technical plan that we update roughly every 10 years. They generally follow the updates and the adoption of the city's general plan. So this kind of fleshes out the details of what we're doing in transportation that is mentioned in the general plan that was adopted about a year and a half ago. This is, I'm lucky enough that I've been with the city long enough that this is, I think, the fourth transportation plan that I've been involved in. These are really important documents. And so we're going to hopefully get some good feedback from the public as we go through this process. What we're doing here this evening with you all is kicking it off with the council, even though we've already begun our public process as of a couple weeks ago when we started our public meetings and reaching out to boards and commissions, et cetera. There is no ask of you all today, tonight, except for feedback. We will be back later on in this year and into calendar year 26 for more feedback as we progress in the project and then ultimately getting adoption of our plan. And then, next slide, please, Jason. Great. So one thing that I want to mention is that these are plans that are really important to us, important to the public. They do guide us. They do not sit on a shelf. They really do help us in achieving great things in our city. What is flash before you on the screen shows some of the really important things that you all, as councilmembers, have supported, that the community has supported, and that really staff has tried to make happen and make reality, and always referencing the plans and the strength of those plans in doing so. So we are a city in the last 30 years that has done great things. We now have the highest per capita public transit ridership in the state. We have the highest bike ridership commute in the region. We were the first city in the state to adopt a Vision Zero policy, which is really aimed at getting to the point where we have zero fatalities in our transportation system or serious crashes. We continue to see a decline because of your commitment and our community's commitment, a decline in our serious crashes. So that's really significant. And these plans help guide us to getting to those places. When I started the city, we had a couple miles of bike lanes. Now we have hundreds of miles of bike lanes, as you can see here on the screen. So again, wanting to stress the importance of developing these plans and how they guide us into the future. We are here for your feedback. We're hearing great stuff from the community already and recognizing all the great things that we've done and how far we've come with these transportation plans. We ask of you and we ask of the community, where do we go next? What great things can we achieve in our city next with what I think today is the best transportation system in the state? And so with that, the next slide, I think we go to, I'm going to hand this over to Chase Wall. And so with that, the, the next slide, I think we go to, I'm gonna hand this over to Chase Wallman to go through the next set of slides.
Yeah, thank you, Eric. Vice Mayor, members of council, as Eric said, my name is Chase Wallman, Principal Transportation Planner with the Transportation and Sustainability Department. So I wanted to start below with a snapshot of some of the specific performance measures that this plan will contribute to. This plan's overarching goal is to address these specific performance measures by ultimately providing the community with more comfortable, safe and accessible options to commute or recreate in the city, whether that's by bike, car, transit, or as a pedestrian. We thought it was also important to underscore that not only will this update to the transportation plan seek to directly improve Tempe's transportation system and these related performance measures, but also we realize we have the opportunity to support many of the other of the five strategic priorities set by City Council. Beyond the transportation network, this plan will contribute to rideaway landscape maintenance, community health and wellbeing, urban cooling, capital investment created, and more. Next slide, please. I did also want to take a moment to introduce the team working on the transportation plan. I lead the small but mighty transportation planning group, which is comprised of the staff listed here, responsible for capital improvement projects such as streetscapes, multi-use paths and pedestrian bridges, and then also long-range planning efforts such as reviewing transportation elements as part of private development reviews, overseeing the dockless scooter program, and of course, this update to our comprehensive transportation plan. We also meet regularly with our core team, which consists of transit, traffic engineering, sustainability, and neighborhood services staff. Beyond that, we also want to ensure that the priorities and needs of other city departments are supported and reflected as part of our transportation plan update. Our Technical Advisory Group, or TAG, will meet during each phase of the project and consists of representatives from our Community Development, Public Works, Community Services, Public Safety, Diversity Equity and Inclusion, and other city staff. With that, I'm going to hand it on over to Senior Transportation Planner Lindsay Post, who is leading this transportation plan effort.
Thanks, Chase. You can go ahead and advance the slide, Jason. Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of council. As Chase mentioned, my name is Lindsay Post. I'm a Senior Transportation Planner in the Transportation and Sustainability Department, and I am the Project Manager of this plan. Before we dive into the details of the plan development, I wanted to show you our anticipated timeline. We kicked off our plan development in March with an 18-month work schedule. The work tasks are broken up into these three phases, and we are just now wrapping up our understanding phase, or often referred to as the existing conditions analysis. And we held our first public meeting on August 13th. The survey is now open through September 10th. And as you can see here, there will be more opportunities for us to engage the public and present again to mayor and council. Next slide. I developed this scope of work with help from the core working group that Chase introduced and from research on local and national cities and their comprehensive transportation plans. Cities like Salt Lake City, Portland, and Atlanta have light rail, streetcars, major universities, and have or are adjacent to international airports. At the time of our scope development, Mesa and Goodyear were also updating their plans, and I was able to work with colleagues in those cities to learn more about their processes. As you can see, we are still in Phase One. You'll notice that I have starred the public involvement task, and that is to highlight that public involvement is not a one-and-done task that exists only in Phase One, but to highlight that it is paramount to every step of the plan development to ensure this is truly a comprehensive community planning document. And then you can see in Phase Three, we will come back to mayor and council to present draft and final plans and ask for support at that time. Next slide. Our transportation plan is a strategic document outlining how people and goods move through our city. It is Tempe's roadmap for developing and maintaining the city's transportation network. This update will include the update to the Vision Zero Action Plan that Eric introduced, and will include all the elements that you see here. Next slide. And you've seen this slide before, these are all the components that make up our transportation network and what our plan will cover. We boast the most diverse transportation network in the Phoenix metro area with help in part by our dedicated transit tax. We also benefit from working closely with a sustainability and resilience team to collaborate on projects like green stormwater infrastructure adjacent to streetscapes and bike path improvements. Next slide. There have been big changes in our city since our last plan update. We have also experienced changes to our work culture since COVID, with many employers now offering flexible work schedules as a standard practice. We also update our plan to account for the projected change in our population, which this map is showing. On our project website, which I'll introduce at the, at the end of the slide deck, we will show this as an interactive sliding map showing the public where the General Plan 2050 is projected our population to change, so the public can slide it from 2024 and see what changes are expected for 2050. We have a similar map for workforce. Next slide. I also use the transportation plan as feasibility when I apply to state, regional, and federal funds as it demonstrates community priorities. And of course, the transportation plan will support the goals and objectives set forth by the General Plan 2050 in the circulation chapter. We also reference state and regional plans like Momentum 2050 at MAG, and we work with partners like MAG and ADOT to deliver projects like the pedestrian bridges over I-10. Next slide. We look to many different sources to guide the plan development. As I mentioned, the General Plan 2050 drives the plan, but so do many other comprehensive plans that have been created in our city. We and our consulting partner, HDR, did a literature review of all these comprehensive plans and more to ensure that we understand the needs in our city and how our plan can support them. We have also met with or are meeting with these city boards and commissions that you see here and plan to do, do, do so in all three phases. Next slide. We held our first public meeting, which consisted of a virtual midday meeting and an evening open house at the library. That was on August 13th. We have also tabled several events like Open Street Tempe, the city's Juneteenth celebration, Tempe Time Machine, which is a children's summer series. This, this summer was focusing on skateboard. And we were at several ASU Welcome Back events. We also reach out to advocacy, affinity, and community groups such as those listed here. Next slide. The next four slides will show you what the public has access to via our public, our project website and from our public meetings. This is not intended to be an eye exam for all of you. I do not expect you to be able to glean any information from these small maps that you see here. These were, of course, presented in very large format at our public meetings and are available in PDF format on our web, project webpage, so folks can zoom in. The information provided will help them as they take their first survey. This slide shows our current transportation network for pedestrians, bikes, and scooters. Active transportation refers to human-powered transportation. The map on the left shows where we have gaps in our sidewalk network, where we have sidewalks that are below our standard width, that would be in orange, and then where our sidewalks meet our, our standards, which are in green. The map in the middle shows our current bike facilities all over the city, and the map on the right shows our scooter ridership. You probably haven't seen a scooter ridership map yet. This is a map showing trends for the last year. You can see the brick red would show dense trips, and green is fewer trips. And you can see that the, the dark brick red is mostly concentrated in the downtown corridor around ASU. On average, the trip lengths were about 1.5 miles and lasted about 15 minutes, which indicates to us that they are being utilized as a first mile, last mile connectivity. Next slide. The public can also view our current transit network and information on service parameters like frequency and span of all of our transit modes. We also provided the public with information on our new transit shelters, such as the location selection priorities and special features of the, of the shelters, especially the solar-powered lights that light up now at night that prevent buses passing passengers by and helps with safety. Next slide. And of course, we recognize that most people using our transportation network are in their own vehicles. We continue to move traffic and make adjustments using signal timing and technology. Our traffic engineers are watching traffic in real time at our traffic monitoring center to see trouble spots and clear traffic. The map on the left is dynamic, you can see it moving. It shows congestion in a 24-hour span, and the map on the right shows our traffic volumes around the city. Next slide. Safety and crash data is also shown on our project website and at public meetings. This slide is showing a heat map of fatal and serious crashes and has information on crashes involving vulnerable road users such as pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorcyclists. This information and more is available for the public to refer to as they fill out their surveys. Next slide. And speaking of, our survey is now open. It opened on August 13th, the same day as our public meeting. It is open until September 10th. It is available on our project webpage, and we bring paper copies to all of our outreach events. Our website also has interactive features like a location-specific comment map that will stay up through the duration of our planning development. So folks can make comments anytime they want to at any point on our Tempe map. I look forward to going to the public to engage with them on our needs and gaps analysis in Phase Two. Our anticipated public meeting is, is in February of next year. I'll be back to present on that phase with mayor and council then, and then we'll be back next summer for your approval of the final plan. And with that, Vice Mayor Garland, I welcome any questions.
All right, thank you so very much. The great presentation, so much wonderful information. I have two council members who'd like to speak. I've got Councilmember Chin and then Councilmember Hodge.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you for the information. Just a quick question. I often get questions or have conversations with residents about the scooters. And so I, I think this would be a great opportunity for residents to provide feedback, if they have any, about the policies we have or the agreements we have with the scooter companies that we allow in Tempe. So I encourage them to do so. But could you very briefly share with us some general rules and parameters that we have with these companies?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Garland, Councilmember Chin. Thank you for that question. We have a license agreement in place with both, with all of our scooter providers. We work with them closely and with our partners throughout the city, like at Parks and our partners at ASU to help us address the scooters, get them rebalanced where they're overcrowded in certain locations. But we also heavily rely on those license agreements with BIRD and, and LINE to help manage that program. If I could, Councilmember Chin, I'd like to ask Chase to help fill in some of that information as well.
Yeah, thanks, Lindsay. So just a high-level overview of our terms and conditions. There are some conditions in place that talk about the, having a good operational balance with the scooters and rebalancing. So we instituted dedicated scooter corrals that you might have seen in the downtown core. They stretch from Apache to the 202 rural to Center Parkway about. And these are locations where operators, they can only stage their vehicles within these dedicated corrals. Or users using the vehicles can only park. And if they don't park in, in those corrals, then they can be fined or ultimately taken off of the service by the operator. We also have monitoring capabilities now. So we're able to monitor in real time compliance with our, our scooters' term and condition. So we can tell how many scooters are at corrals, if there's overcrowding at corrals. Also, we can make sure that the rebalancing regularly, or if they're in residential areas, they're required to remove those within 24 hours. They can't block sidewalks, so there's a lot of good terms and conditions in place that really help us to monitor scooter programs. But we really rely as well on 311s that come in to let us know, especially in residential areas where we may not have as much visibility into. Those are forwarded to staff so we can have the operators move those if they become a nuisance.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chin. Councilmember Hodge?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. It was very, the information was, you know, always spot-on and great job of perform, presentation, so. But my question is more about funding, and I know you were talking about transportation, and with all of the threats and things happening in the federal, how is that affecting us in the citywide? What, what's gonna happen with our infrastructure when it comes to transportation? And arrested our freeways and highways?
Yeah.
Built.
Vice Mayor Garland, Councilmember Hodge, thank you for that question. It is an interesting time to be a transportation planner, that's for sure. What I have seen, because I, I take on a fair amount of our transportation planning grants that I apply to from the FTA and the federal highways as well, what I'm seeing is that the, the NOFOs are not being released. What I've been expecting all summer long, they just have not been released. So the SMART grant never got released by the FTA. TOD, which is Transportation Demand Management, that did not get released. So where I typically would be scrambling and writing a ton of grants right now, there are no opportunities. So it, it makes us nervous. If I could also, Councilmember Hodge, I would also like to turn it back over to Eric Iverson to, to expand a little bit on that.
Thanks, thanks for the question, Councilmember Hodge. One thing I would add to what Lindsay said is that we do continue to work with the feds, and there's multiple, under the US Department of Transportation, there's multiple branches of that that we work with to try to, you know, seek the funding that, that maybe in the past administration had been secured and now is stalled or, or not happening right now. So we continue to work with them to try to get that. We, 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 and we have had some successes with that. We are also working with our Government Relations Team, Jonathan Shuffield, as you know, to work, you know, kind of on the inside with how we're messaging this back to DC through our lobbyists. And then we, we look, you know, we, we have had a lot of success in getting grants in the last several years. So we have, we're flushed with projects right now. It's really in the next couple of years where we worry about maybe funding availability, but we just don't know, you know, what's gonna happen at that federal level. So we do have a lot of great projects lined up with really substantial federal funding that's already secure. So we, you know, for, for a year, you know, to, to three years, we have good projects lined up. We also, it helps with the passage in November of 2024, the regional transportation tax, Prop 479 that passed. That gives us more funding in the region for regional projects, so that does help us as well. Those are some thoughts. I don't know if Chase has anything else he wants to add to that, but good question, thank you.
Thank you. I have just one more follow-up to that, and I know you said you're working with Jonathan, and we all work with Jonathan. We all go to DC for different things throughout the year. Is there anything that we could be doing, like lobbying on our behalf for our cities too? And if there is, would you mind giving us some talking points of what is needed and where is that and stuff? So, because I'm on my way to DC in a few weeks for a conference, and I'm just wondering, I'm gonna meet with some of our, you know, congressional elected office, so I just want to make sure that I have the right, you know, conversations. I'm asking the right questions. It's not a picture op for me, it's more about what can I do to make sure that I sustain our city? So I'm just wondering, is there, you know, can you get with us and kind of give us some like talking points when we're there? Because I'm gonna be gone in two weeks, and I want to be able to, I don't want just, I don't want to be able to just talk to them about, yeah, the pleasantries. I want to be able to come in with what we need and how we can work together to get there.
Yeah, thank you for that request, and certainly we can provide you with speaking points. We do, you know, our department reports up to our, our great CFO and Deputy City Manager Camacho. And, you know, obviously, because this is attached to our, our funding. And so we have a spreadsheet that shows our existing grants and grants that we're still kind of working on finalizing with the feds, and we can certainly share that with you and the rest of the council to prepare you for any conversations you might have in DC. We also, you know, as part of the relationship with our government relations, you know, we, we, we have worked with, I know you have as well, with Congressman Stanton, who's been a big advocate for a lot of the transportation and sustainability projects as well. So we, we lean on our congressman as another representative of the region to help message this back. So I think every, every voice matters in this conversation, and we'd be happy to provide you with, with kind of the update of where we're at with, with all of our grants that we have secured and ones that we're trying that we're trying to secure.
I am, I'm very thankful. Thank you so much for that, because, yeah, Congressman Stanton is phenomenal with us, but I'm going to go ruffle some other feathers, so I want to be able to go outside him, you know, because we're going to need just more to his support. So that's my, that's my thing. So I want to be prepared and outlined and ready to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Next up, we have Councilmember Adams, then Councilmember Keating, and then Councilmember Amber.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, or Vice Board of Directors and Council, and I'm giving you lots of good titles here tonight. So anyway, I have the good fortune to serve on the Valley Metro Board of Directors, and I could tell you through experience and, and all my years in transportation, that we do have the best transportation in the valley and the state of Arizona. So I'm very proud of our transportation team. Eric has been with us for many, many years and has been a close ally and supporter of transportation and is, has a great vision for predicting our transportation needs. I am concerned about scooter and multimodal safety with transportation, and we'll be proposing a subcommittee later on in our meeting tonight. So thank you very much, thanks to the team, and I yield my time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Keating?
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Piggybacking on Councilmember Hodge's point, and we talked about the budget a little bit earlier, can you just briefly give us an overview of the revenue that the scooters bring into the city, both through licensing fees and the daily use fees that I know that they pay? And those monies go directly into the transportation fund to increase multimodal options in the city, do they not? Thank you.
Councilmember Keating, thank you for that question. I'm going to also defer over to Chase to fill in that information.
Yeah, thank you. So I have our numbers at least for 2024. So in 2024, the city invoiced a total of $435,343 from the operators of the scooters that are operating in 2024. So I don't have the most, the most recent numbers year-to-date, but as far as last year, it was just over $400,000.
I appreciate that. Now, that's, that's kind of what I expected. I thought it was kind of around 300 and some thousand, so it's more than I, than I remembered it being, but I just think it's important to point out the economic impact that scooters have, particularly in our downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating. Councilmember Amber?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Vice Mayor. I've got a real quick question for Eric, now that I've moved rooms and the blowers no longer outside of my window. How long, from a vision stereo standpoint, are we going to need in terms of getting data from the photo radar to see whether or not it's having an effect on, like, serious crashes, people slowing down, you know, that kind of thing?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Councilmember Amber. We, you know, I don't have the, we just started the enforcement in June for photo enforcement, and so I would imagine that very soon we'll have quarterly data that we can share back to the council on the efficacy of that program. One thing that, you know, so that will be shared, shared soon, I'm sure. One thing I do want to mention is that we really, when we're making decisions about, about traffic safety and looking at trends, we try to give it longer than, to determine its effectiveness, we try to give it longer than a quarter, sometimes up to years, to make sure that we're seeing the trajectory that we want. I do know that there's a, there, you know, there's a lot of chatter on social media and there's a lot of chatter among staff about, about some of the, you know, people are seeing the cameras flashing at intersections. So it is generating a lot of feedback in the community, and so we look forward to sharing with the council what, what kind of data we're seeing and the effectiveness that it's having.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Amber. Councilmember Adams?
I have no further questions, I apologize.
That's all right, thanks. Councilmember Hodge?
Yes, thank you. Wanted to go back to what, what Councilmember Amber said. When we do, like, our, when we get our data points, would it be possible that maybe we can get some of our regional ones around us that's doing the same thing with their, you know, with the cameras and everything, so we can have some point, pinpoints of how well it's going and, you know, just a regional, because it's not just affecting just the city of Tempe, it affects everybody who comes, you know, through us or go through Mesa or Chats, you know, Chandler-Hazard and Scottsdale. So just kind of what's going on regionally, because I know that a lot of our constituents talk about safety and how it's coming. So I would love to have some data points showing exactly what's going around, like, just not just affecting us, but just in our region for areas that we drive in, you know, daily.
Yeah, certainly, that's a great recommendation, Councilmember Hodge. How do we compare with, with the other adjacent cities?
Exactly.
And I certainly, because of the conversation, the robust conversation about photo enforcement in our community, I would imagine it's similar in others. And people are going to want to hear a full, you know, our residents, and you all are going to want to hear a full reporting of the effectiveness of it. So certainly, as we get good information, you know, moving deeper into the year for, for the operations of the program, we will, we will get back to you and share that with comparisons with the other cities.
Thank you. And my last thing to that is, also, I know that, you know, it's been a big concern with street racing, and how is that coming along with the, with the cameras and everything too? Because I know that's been a big concern throughout the time that people are racing, how is that effective with the cameras?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Are there any other additional questions or comments? All right, hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the discussion on this item, and thank you so much, staff, for the presentation. This is wonderful.
Thank you.
So will we move, we will move on to Item 4C, which is the Tempe Public Library Update. So I will now call upon Craig Hayden, Community Services Director, and Jessica Dupitis, Deputy Community Services Director, Library Services, for a presentation.
And I think I'm flying solo unless you've got something to say, Craig.
All right, Jessica, it's all you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Mayor, Council, City Manager, and staff. I'm Jessica Dupitis, Deputy Community Services Director for the library, or as I call myself, the City Librarian. I'm here to give you an overview of what the library's been doing with our community in the last few years. Libraries are trusted community resources, and where people come for accurate information, whether that's our circulating materials, using public computers and library databases, or asking staff. Next slide, please, Jason. These are the council priorities directly related to library services, but in my strong opinion, we're involved in everything. The library is always up in your business, so, you know, I'll add more to this later. And the next slide is an outline of what this presentation will be covering. So the 3.33 statistical measurements, the major reading initiatives, and then kind of a debrief of what's new at Tempe Public Library. On the next slide, as we're a data-driven city, we'll start with some numbers. Here are the last four fiscal years and our material circulation data. The blue bar is physical items, the tan bar is digital. As you can see, more and more people are using the library virtually. This is in line with trends with how folks are accessing information, and we offer options like unlimited digital access for our current book club titles to encourage participation. We also do our best to offer audio items where possible to ensure accessibility. Ear reading counts the same as eye reading, it's all reading. We have a circulation goal of 3.47 items per capita, and as you can see here, we hit 5.4 items per capita. Additional context, the state average in Arizona is 4.95 items per capita, and Maricopa County Library System is 1.7 items per capita, so your library is smashing it. The next round of numbers on the next slide is our library programming. As you can see, there is some fluctuation in the numbers. This is due to our efforts to ensure that we have quality programs over quantities of programs. There was also a drop in attendance in the FanCon 2024 when the date was shared with other major programs in the city, and we only have so many people to go to so many amazing things. In our youth programming, however, the attendance continues to grow. We now have four storytimes a week for varying ages, including a Tuesday night family storytime for folks who might work a nine-to-five and not be able to get away during the day, and we're adding a bilingual English-Spanish storytime starting in October. We often have 80 to over 100 people attending each of these storytimes, so that's a couple hundred people every week. It's a crucial early literacy step, and it helps improve school readiness as kids develop their print awareness, they learn motor skills through songs and finger plays, and as they reach the preschool storytime age, become more skilled in following directions and learning how to help still their wiggles to focus on the librarian. We offer a variety of programming for all ages and currently run seven book clubs for adults. We also use books that have been loved to pieces in programs like our Recycled Crafts. We bring in a variety of presenters to introduce our community to a broad range of experiences. From last fiscal year, we averaged 31 people per program, and we are continually adjusting to offer what the needs of our community are as they change and grow. The library is a place to discover new things, as you know, the staff is here to help. So we're aiming for a 37 per person, so we're at 31 now, we have room to grow. Next slide is to highlight some of our major reading initiatives, I want to share out about three of them. We've got FanCon, Summer Reading, and One Tempe One Book. Our first one, FanCon, and this slide has lots of pictures, so it's good to look at while I talk. Go ahead and switch it, Jason. FanCon is a free annual program offered in January that's a celebration of all fandoms, comics, manga, anime, film, television, you like it, we bring it. We bring together vendors, performers, and fans from all over the valley with attendance numbers in the thousands for an immersive day of the celebration of your favorite media. Other events like this can be prohibitively expensive to attend for the vendors or for the participants, and ours is a point of access for anyone in the community. It is completely free. We have programming leading up to it about elements of fandom, or how to craft your own foam armor, or how to do realistic zombie makeup, or how to write a comic, because reading comics is also reading and can be an initial access point for reluctant readers because there are the additional visual elements to help retain your attention. We have a costume contest every year, a lot of which is pictured here, with a variety of age categories. We provide a quiet sensory space for folks to decompress. We invite a variety of food trucks, and the Friends of the Tempe Public Library have both the bookstore and the cafe open the entire time. Next up, Summer Reading. We just finished this one, and these are our numbers for summer reading participation. It's our biggest opportunity to connect with the community, to encourage them to read for pleasure. It's major and fairly universal in libraries as a way to engage youth and adults during the most common vacation time. As you can see, our participation and completion has reached the highest numbers to date this year. Uniquely, Tempe has offered a city-specific staff challenge in the last few years to encourage city staff to become familiar with the free resources the library offers, both for their own needs and to be able to share with the community at large. This participation metric gauges the impact of our outreach in the community, our connection with schools, rec centers, city programs, and the larger group of Tempe residents. This year, we were fully staffed in the youth department after a multi-year deficit, so it gave us the chance to increase our outreach and programming. And from 39% completion in 2021 to 59% completion in 2025 is huge, and the number of minutes read would amount to somebody reading non-stop for 11 years. And we did that as a community in two months. But more fun than that is the next slide, Photos. We offer programs for all ages, celebrate reading accomplishments, encourage folks to find things they might enjoy, and there are prizes. We have a variety of prizes locally and through the county system to encourage participation, including a pair of Mercury tickets to each person who reaches 750 minutes. To complete the program entirely, you need to reach 1,000 minutes. If that sounds overwhelming, that's about 17 minutes a day throughout June and July. If you have any commute at all, an audiobook halves you covered. If you're reading a bedtime story, it counts for you and the little one you're reading it to. All reading counts. We did have a community member who wrote to the city manager and shared, wow, the summer reading program is incredible. We ate out at local restaurants without spending a dime. We went to Mercury and had an awesome family experience. We even traveled up to Fool's Hollow State Park for free with our Parks Pass, and that's not mentioning that it encouraged all of us to read all summer. My nine, 11, and 13-year-olds together read over 20 books in six weeks. I did not spend any money, and my kids were wildly entertained. And our next slide, our newest reading initiative, One Tempe One Book. Community reading initiatives are designed to connect a community around a universal topic to foster conversation and learning. Our first One Tempe One Book was in 2023. Our topic was disability, and we handed out 1,250 copies of the book shown here, Disability Visibility. By putting piles of books in spaces throughout the communities, including coffee shops, rec centers, restaurants, other local businesses, including a waxer who was very excited to be involved, we created entry points to the library in places where our community is already spending some time. By picking up a free copy of the book, you have a place to start the conversation. An example of this is that Green New American Vegetarian had a stack of books, and when I went for a meal, the cashier was reading a copy. I asked her how she liked it, and she said, this book is changing how I view the world. She did not know who I was, she did not know I put the books there in the first place, and she really gave me the perfect soundbite. We connected our programming in the month of October to the topic of disability and had a presenter share about using a seeing-eye dog, had disabled authors reading from their books, initiated conversations about access and ableism and what it means to be disabled. Our 2024 book was From Here to Eternity by Caitlin Doughty, and our programming centered around death. We talked about estate planning, we brought in a local mortician to talk about the funeral industry, we had a death doula do a death meditation program. This year, a little preview, we're doing storytelling. We all tell stories, stories shape lives. We come from a story, we create a story, we leave a story behind. We'll be giving away 1,500 copies of How to Tell a Story by The Moth, thanks to funding support from the Friends of the Tempe Public Library. Next slide. Tempe Public Library is often the first place our community thinks of when they need answers. We're an ideal third space. You can spend the day without spending a dime, you have access to air conditioning, study rooms, programming, restrooms, place to sit, free Wi-Fi, and of course, lots of books to read. We host public meetings, private meetings, room rentals for birthday parties or trainings or job fairs. In addition to this being what we already offer, we've made some improvements over the last few years. So in the words of the great philosopher Busta Rhymes, give me some more. First, our brand-new logo. This is something I'm really excited about, to the point where I did agree to get it tattooed on my body, and I do have it permanently inked onto my arm. Additionally, we added a library app that allows folks to check their account, reserve rooms, look for events on the calendar, they can even scan books that they see outside of the library at a bookstore to request a hold. Working with facilities, the lower level got a fresh coat of paint, and thanks to funding from the Friends, we were able to work with a local artist on the mural pictured here to ensure that kids could see themselves in the library. It's got a really diverse cast of kids in there, and for the record, the river is made of ink, which is why it's black, and it's called We All Go Where the Stories Flow. The artist created coloring pages for us with elements of the mural so families could take home their own version. We updated our mission and vision to better reflect how we respond to the needs of the community. We have a short story machine, like a CVS receipt but fun, that allows people to upload and share their own stories and download stories, print them out, and take them home. We've experimented with programming for adults, shaking it up what people expect from us. This photo here is from our Punk Paint program that was a Sunday in August at 3:00 PM. Fifty people came to listen to punk rock and learn some basic watercolor skills. There's so much more I can share, and if you've talked to me for longer than five minutes, I probably have, but we meet our community where they are, we help them expand their skills, their knowledge, and their abilities. The library has something for everyone, and we're here to help you find out what that is. A public library is a crucial resource in any community where folks of all abilities, backgrounds, socioeconomic statuses, interests, and identities belong, and we work to reflect that in our collections, our spaces, programming, and in our service. So with that, I have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
You always have so much energy. It is incredible. All the things that you have turned on, all the programs that you've put together at the library have just been amazing, and I will, I will say it's, you can see the trends on how much there are, that are, people are reading books and participating in your programs, and it does say an awful lot. I'm so proud of what you do. So I'm going to, I'm going to open up, thanks again for the presentation, to open the floor to our council and our mayor for any questions regarding the project. I have first, I have Councilmember Hodge.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. I just want to say, Jessica, you do a phenomenal job, so I just love all the programs. I just want to say, Jessica, you do a phenomenal job, so I just love all the programs, and I love how it's everybody from the age of zero to 299 that can be and enjoy our libraries and community. My question is, I know that you have a lot of connection within the schools and doing a lot of projects, is there any help that you need, or is it, do you get all the kind of connections with the schools that you have? My question is, do we need to help you in that service anyway? Possibly.
Thank you so much for asking, Councilmember. We have the connections, it's the capacity of the teachers and the schools that is really the hang-up, because as we know, they are stretched thinner and thinner and thinner, and we look for how we can supplement without adding additional layers of work on them. So we've got great connections, but if I need help, I know where to find you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Mayor Woods?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. Jessica, I just want to say, great presentation as always, and I think that the library is always up in your business, it needs to be put on a t-shirt somewhere for the city activity. That's my first thought, and since you quoted Busta Rhymes, I was going to tell any Tempe resident watching this video, in the words of the notorious B.I.G., if you don't know, now you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Woods.
Thank you, Mayor Woods. Do we have other, any other comments from our council?
I'll just say one thing, that Mayor Woods, he's even funnier when he's away from, you know, the council, maybe, you know? You could take that comedy on the road with us one day.
Jessica, I just want to say that I love the fact that you mentioned that audiobooks count as readings for somebody who has dyslexia, audiobooks are my jam, so thank you so much for saying that. Connections Cafe, I had an amazing coffee, cup of coffee there, so thank you for that. Love, love, love the new logo, can't wait to see the tattoo. And the mural was, oh, there you go, it's there. Love it. And the mural was great, and being there for the ribbon cutting for the mural was so much fun, and my grandson, every time we take him to the library, he loves looking at that mural, he stops every time. It is a fantastic piece of art, so thank you so much. And if we have no other questions, I'm going to go ahead and close this item on our agenda, but Jessica, thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
All right, so we are going to go to Agenda Item Number Five, a call to the audience. This portion of the meeting is reserved for those wishing to speak on Committee of the Whole Items on this agenda. The same protocol for public comment applies as described earlier. Madam Clerk, were there any electronic speaker cards received for this part of the meeting?
Vice Mayor, we have not received any cards.
All right, thank you so much, and we will go ahead and move on to Agenda Item Number Six. This is the proposed council committees. There are two items this evening. Per City Council Rule 7, Subsection 2B, any two members of the council may propose the formation of a subcommittee at a work-study session of the council by identifying the purpose of the proposed subcommittee and the proposed members of the subcommittee, and obtaining approval of the majority of the council. So we will go to Item 6A1, which is the Community Engagement and Connection Council Committee, and this is a subcommittee that I am proposing, so I'm going to read you just what we have written down to tell you a little bit about what this committee is going to be. Its objectives will focus on strengthening relationships and fostering collaboration to achieve positive outcomes, such as increasing participation in Tempe's boards and commissions, expanding community involvement, and building stronger partnerships. These efforts directly influence the overall health and wellness of the community by creating a more connected, engaged, and supportive environment. They also set up for performance measure 2.15 participating in city decisions and 3.34, which is community health and well-being. And I am honored to have Councilmember Amber and Councilmember Chin as a member of this committee. I see I have hands up there, just a moment. Do any council members have any questions regarding this committee? Let's see, I have Councilmember Adams. You're on mute.
Vice Mayor, I'm just waiting for the next read, so, no problem, sorry about that, and I'm supportive of this committee, so thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you very much. So I'd like to find if we have consensus to move forward with this proposed committee, so can I have a voice with consensus? We've got?
Yes.
Thumbs up, a yes?
Yes.
All right, well, I appreciate it, looks like we have consensus to move forward on the Community Engagement and Connection Subcommittee. Next, we have Item 6A2, which is Motorized and Electronic Mobility Device Safety Council Committee, and I will call upon Councilmember Adams to present on this subcommittee proposal.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd like to introduce a proposal to establish a new council subcommittee dedicated to motorized and electric mobility device safety here in Tempe. Councilmember Hodge will be joining me. As we know, Tempe is one of the most bike-friendly cities in the valley. Our compact location, vibrant downtown, and the presence of Arizona State University makes this a hub for walking, cycling, and now for electric bicycles and scooters. These devices are part of everyday life for students, workers, and visitors alike. But as the youth grows, so do the challenges. We've heard concerns from residents about rider behavior, sidewalk safety, and collisions. The purpose of this subcommittee is to make sure Tempe remains both innovative and safe in how we manage micro-mobility. Thank you, that concludes my statement.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Adams. Do any council members or mayor have any questions or comments regarding this subcommittee?
I do, and I just can't wait, and I'm excited to get started on it. Thank you so much, Councilmember Adams.
All right, so do we have consensus to move forward with the formation of the proposed Motorized and Electric Mobility Device Safety Council Committee?
Yes.
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 All right, sounds like we have consensus, Councilmember Adams.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, so we will go ahead and move on. Are there any other proposals for new subcommittees at this time? All right, hearing none, we will go ahead and move on to Item 6B. This is, I will now go down a list that we have of the council subcommittees in order listed on the agenda, and ask each subcommittee chair if they have any updates. So the first is 6B1, which is Age-Friendly Tempe Council Subcommittee, and that's my committee, so I just want to give a quick update that through our subcommittee, there is a survey that is out right now that is open until September 30th, and it is for Tempe residents 50 and over. If you wouldn't mind taking some time to go and do this survey, it would really help us to form this plan for the city of Tempe's age-friendly plan. I will say that our next meeting will be September 23rd, and I want to thank Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Keating for participating on this subcommittee with me. Next, we have Item 6B2, Animal Welfare and Cruelty in Tempe Council Subcommittee. Councilmember Hodge is the chair, do you have any update regarding this committee?
Yes, I do. I also brought Jackson, who wanted to say something because it's animal cruelty, and he just wants to thank everybody in the council for doing it. Our first, oh, thank you, Jackson. So our first subcommittee meeting will be on Tuesday, September 30th, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. in City Hall on the third floor. And also, Councilmember Adams and Vice Mayor Doreen Garland is a part of it, and I have one question to ask of the mayor and council. I heard from Councilmember Amber that she would want to be a part of it, is it a cutoff with three, or can we have added an extra person to it?
Mayor?
I can take that, I mean, it would be a cutoff because we can't have a quorum through a subcommittee, so three would be the maximum before you form a quorum.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to make sure of that, checking on it. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams, thank you, Mayor Woods. If we have no other comments, we'll go ahead and move on to 6B3, which is the Drink Spiking Education and Prevention Prevention Council Subcommittee. Councilmember Keating, do you have an update?
I do, thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you and Councilmember Hodge for serving on the committee with me. As you two know, but our colleagues don't, we've had a few different meetings now and engaged with stakeholders up and down the spectrum, from Tempe PDE to downtown Tempe Authority, the Tempe Chamber, we heard from the Tempe Coalition at our last meeting, and we have a pretty broad consensus to move forward with something, so we have directed staff to start working on a proposed ordinance, which we will discuss at our next committee meeting, which will be the last Friday of September at noon. This one will be in person, so that's exciting stuff, and we'll bring it back to the full council after that and engage in the necessary public input sometime in the fall or winter, so we're moving forward, and it's pretty exciting stuff. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Councilmember Keating. We will move on to Item 6B4, which is Mixed Use Space Council Committee. Councilmember Chin, do you have an update?
I do, Vice Mayor, thank you. The first meeting of this subcommittee will be on Monday, September 8th, and it will be on the third floor of City Hall.
All right, well, thank you very much. All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to Item 6B5, which is the Revitalization of Tempe Town Lake Council Subcommittee. Councilmember Amber, do you have any updates?
Not really, our next meeting is actually tomorrow on the third floor at 3:00 p.m. City Hall, and if you've got any questions about it, whether or not you want to come, contact our office, but I will say that I had a little preview today, and some exciting things are happening, we got some really good responses from the RFQ and RFP that we put out.
All right, well, thank you so much, Councilmember Amber. All right, so we will go ahead and move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is the Future Agenda Items. The next, let's see, council members may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session. In accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. So would any council members like to request an item for a future issue review session? All right, so hearing no requests, I will go ahead and close this item. We are down to Agenda Item Number Eight, which is Adjournment. The next scheduled work-study session is October 23rd, 2025, and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.